Okay. Now being 6:20, we're out of executive session, back in open session. I would remind that this meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. So, the first item we have is that 6:30 is the SWATA study, but the warrants paid? Can we jump to that and then work down?
Bree was totaling those up for me. I expect her here in just a minute.
Why don't we do town clerk while...
Okay, so all I have here...
Forgive me, I guess am I taking minutes until...is Bree coming?
She should be.
You know what, she is gonna be here, but I can take minutes until she gets here. Okay, so it's...
So you're jumping to town clerk office update?
Well, Tricia's here and I thought we could...
3:11.
All I have for that is I was gonna go over Tara's resignation letter.
Oh, okay. Tara wanted to come in because she's also talking about the expiring appointed seats.
Okay.
So, let's talk about Cava Urban Redevelopment.
Sure. Okay, so we received in the mail the final environmental impact report put together by VHB and quite a few of the people from Plimpton who have been, the abutters, have been involved with this, they received copies of it as well, so they did a really nice job getting the plan out. It was disappointing to see in the plan that they had decided to forego a gate where, in the location that we had previously agreed upon with the developer and with the Town of Harbor. And I think anyone who attended that meeting felt like we had an agreement to do that and that that was definitely the plan going forward. So I just sent an email to the woman that had put this plan together, because she said if you had any questions or you need anything, email me. So I did, and I just asked her to reconsider their position about the gate, that I didn't think that there was anything they could really do with a traffic type of road configuration to deter people who were going to be working down there from traveling that road. And I asked her if they did have a plan to please provide it to us, because we've got residents that are very concerned and we need to answer their questions. This definitely impacts their quality of life and we need some answers. So what she did was she forwarded it to the gentleman who is the assistant to Michael Beaton, or Matthew Beaton, who is the secretary. So they have that email and I can provide you guys with a copy of it as well. So we'll see. I think that we did, we had an agreement to put in the gate and I'm hoping that they reconsider their position on that.
So, just to be clear, the gate is at the entrance to Montello?
No, the gate would be after Heather's Path, in between the towns.
South of Heather's Path?
Yes, south of Heather's Path. To prevent through traffic. So people could not travel Montello from the north to gain access to the industrial park. So that's what it would do.
That they'd have to go all the way around to the south end of Montello?
They'd have to go all the way around to the main entrance where the traffic will be controlled. So they said that they didn't think, public safety wasn't supporting it, or the town officials didn't think that the gate was such a good idea, but I think that's something we definitely need to revisit and I think we can find a way to make it work. If not the gate, something else.
Conversely, there'd be no traffic coming out of there, going down Montello.
Correct. There'd be no traffic coming out of there. And so, we'll see. We'll see what happens, but we'll keep it on the radar and...
See how they respond to your...
See how they respond. Yeah, we had talked about, and we'd gotten an opinion from Alana, whether or not we could do that, and it did require both of the towns to work together. If we were to close it to through traffic with this gate, this would not be anything that's permanent. Emergency vehicles would definitely be able to get through if needed, so that was never going to be an issue. It was just to prevent people from utilizing Montello from the north to get into the industrial park. So we'll see. More to come.
The warrants paid this week were $1,749.24 for utilities. Ms. Colleen, coming back to talk about the tax title?
She's not. She wasn't planning on it. So that appointment is required as part of the process for disposing of the land of low value. So she was asking that you please make that appointment tonight so that she's in compliance with everything. It's what she's been working on with her tax title attorney for the better part of a year, and she needs to be appointed as that so that she can continue on with the process.
So, do you have wording for that?
Yes, it's just to appoint her as the tax title custodian. So it would be, the vote would be to appoint the town's treasurer as the tax title custodian. And it's not a formal appointment where we do a slip, it's more or less just a formality.
And it's for the position, not for the person?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So the treasurer would be the tax title custodian?
Yes, not her by name.
Right, okay. So I would make that motion?
Okay.
All right, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have Mrs. Letty at 6:30, but that's five minutes from now.
I think we can start it?
I think so, too.
Thank you. You're open here, Bree. I might have badly on my stuff up here. Well, you all know that, you know, the Open Space Committee is required every seven years to submit an update of the town's open space plan. And we did that at the end of 2016, early 17, because that had been seven years since the last approved one. And we were conditionally approved, which is good news. And as usual, the state always asks a number of questions that they either want more clarification on, they want us to talk more about, whatever, whatever. And one of the most important sections of the open space plan is called environmental challenges, which is their way of saying, everything that's environmental in the town, soils, water, you know, policies for managing all of those historic sites, you name it. And we had built on the plans, information on that from 2009, which was done by the Old Colony Planning Council. But when this woman rightly asked for more, it's made us dig down to say, well, what more should we be doing? Because it's a very, you know, it's important stuff that we know. So we have, we got a little delayed this year on a few other things that we had to do. So we went back to it, just, you know, a month or two ago, to see what else did we need to do to fill out environmental challenges. And I thought I'd have a fifth, I'm unfortunately the one assigned to that section, so I will take ownership, blame, whatever. So I thought, okay, we'll keep checking these things off and finding out what we need to do. And one of them is a question about the quality of our, understanding of our water and groundwater resources as they relate to our aquifer. So I just thought, I'm gonna check this off in 15 minutes, I'm gonna get it done, and I'm here two minutes later to tell you, we can't do this. Mainly because DEP requires every town to map their potential water resources and encourages them heavily to create bylaws and other protective measures, if necessary, so that they're sure they have adequate water for the future growth of the town. And so we do have, we have a groundwater map. Mark loves it when I bring visuals, so I couldn't resist. It's his favorite.
There's treatment for that, probably.
No, no, there's no treatment for loving maps. This map was done by the town and by the state for DEP with some help from the town in 1991, somewhat updated in 1994. So that was what I went hunting for, because you'll see this around various offices here. And it's our various groundwater zones. So I thought, great, I'll just find out what data we have, you know, what we use to drive that map, and we'll take it from there and see what we need to build on. The bottom line is that, yeah, no one seems to have the data, we don't know where it came from, we don't know. So I took the next, I thought, logical question, was I called DEP? I said, how about what you have? Could you contribute the data? And they couldn't do that, and for whatever reason. But, so as I went through their various water experts, they basically said, it's a good thing that you're calling, because the, and they will not, this was just while I was talking to them in very long conversations. They were getting out what data they did have from us, what's on the state mapping system called Oliver, and so on and so on. And they were saying, it's a good thing you're addressing this, because they think that we are way under-resourced in terms of information for really mapping and protecting and whatever we want to do, to protect our groundwater and well resources. So one of the points of the open space plan is to make sure that we are identifying all potential wells and ensuring that we know where our groundwater zones are, and then working with the town and the citizens to, you know, take the standard measures to protect those zones, so that in the future there's adequate water for the growth of the town. We took a measure towards this, and I think it was 19, maybe 2012 or 2013, we did upgrade our groundwater bylaws a bit to make sure that we didn't have any toxics and things and going into those groundwater zones. So that's a good thing. But what we didn't do was extend that to really understand what groundwater zones we have, and particularly the wells. DEP did a quick survey of the information on the public sites and said, you know, we don't see many wells identified in Plimpton. And I talked to several of the state's experts in this, and they said, you really look under-resourced on wells.
When you say wells, are we just talking, we're talking houses?
Public, public wells.
Just public wells.
Good question. It's public wells. Every town should identify potential community well sources that will pump anywhere from 50,000 to 100,000 or gallons or more, you know, a day. And they like you to know where those are, because then you put some measures of what you can do above those sources to protect the groundwater, you know. And depending on how they interpret what's on the Oliver maps right now, it's maybe two or three, and they're not, it's not clear what those data is. So they seem, the DEP people said, without doing any surveys or anything, they're concerned that we seem to be under-resourced in terms of information, but that we seem to have very few potential community wells designated, which is a concern as the town grows and tries to manage where are the good places to direct, you know, density and maybe, you know, what do you do to manage it, and so on. So I'll show you, in the open space plan, just getting a little tattered from being carried around, you can see that. But the open space plan, this is the map of the septic limitations in town. And the red are the ones that have the most, these are by soils. This shows where we have the most severe septic limitations in town. It's basically...
Everywhere.
Everywhere. The orange is slightly not as bad, but you know, we're not a town that's ideal. And then down here, they did as of, this was done 2001 or '03, they had done what surveys they could to look at recharge potential in the town for where you would have important areas to recharge your aquifer, right? And the white, the blue areas were areas that were important to protect for recharge. The white areas, we have no information. And we still don't, 16 years later, whatever it is. And these are the water resources we knew at the time. Again, this is from 2009. Mrs. Mostly looking at Cranberry Boggs and our wetlands marshes. There were a few potential wells on here, some of which either don't exist anymore or maybe didn't exist in the first place. So that's what these DEP people were saying, is that many towns, not all, but many towns have really addressed this, starting with the selectmen. Doesn't mean you have to do it. But many towns have a water study committee, and they put together a water study committee. You get a hydrogeologist in and you say, here's, guide us through this, figure out how to do it. And at first I was worried that meant that we have to get lots of money and, you know, sink, you know, pump. No. You really get a hydrogeologist in to really work at looking, there are a lot of data sources on all of this, having to do with groundwater and flow and soils and all, and they haven't been integrated. So, you know, they're in different grab bags, one's in Ag and one's in a different soils thing over here. And you really, each town has to put together your own profiles. So, once I finally understood that this was the problem, I called Peter Newton. Peter Newton is the hydrogeologist that you saw here in July, and he's a very well-respected hydrogeologist, and he has worked with many, or most all of the, he knows DEP, he knows all the other state departments, he knows the people who do all this. He sat on the aquifer commission for Plymouth County, you know, he knows all this stuff. And he finally took me through the ABCs, you know. He said, way back up, you really do, and he very nicely offered, I said, this, we want to grapple with it, I want to tell the selectmen about it, and if they decide that we need to at least try to figure something out. He said, I will come over and help us as just, you know, he'll contribute his time to help us understand these problems. But he said, you are gonna have to then step up and decide which, what solution path you might want to take, if you decide you have a problem, which we might, everyone's telling us we might. And if that happens, we, the open space committee, have a proposal pending before the CPC to do what we did in 2016, which is to have what we call a pre-acquisition proposal, so that if any land is of possible interest to the town, we have the ability to hire technical expertise. And whenever we do this, and it just, it happened again when we wrote that in October, we put that in as a preventive measure, you know, that we just make sure we have some capacity if something comes up, and indeed, that's what happened this last year, you know, that's how we did the farm. The rule for the state is that when you start moving to identifying resources you want to protect, because you've decided they're important to the health of the town long-term, I may be misquoting, but I've been told by Peter and others, those have to be town-owned. You know, maybe it's just a certain amount, maybe it's just a parameter, but they have to be town-owned. Well, that would be right under this, if we get approved by town meeting for this new pre-acquisition proposal, we will have another technical account to go out and hire someone like Peter, to, you know, come along and help us really figure out, how do we address these questions, and get some technical advice, and, you know, who knows where it's gonna lead? He said he does this with many towns, he knows how it works, he would take it, take us through it step by step. And I can't tell you really, if, I have no sense of a way to direct our concern, you know, is it minimal concern? You know, we've done a lot of basic things that frankly, you know, we thought we were in pretty good shape, but then again, when we had people from DEP and others looking at it briefly, pretty intensively, but briefly, saying, you know, we're really concerned you guys are under-resourced here and you haven't taken proper care of this, and you need to go back. So I don't know where it's gonna lead, but the open space committee talked about it and said, you know, we really think the best thing we need to do is tell you guys about this, see what you think, and we would recommend forming a water study committee. The water study committee, and I have to say parenthetically, that every DEP person, and I've talked to other agencies, that's one of the first things they all say is, well, do you have a water study committee? That's number one. And it has to be a representative cross-cutting committee from the key commissions and departments in town, that would be logical, you know, like the planning board and conservation commission, and the board of health, and, you know, bylaw, you know, you guys, you know, you just write down your six or seven sort of, you know, pieces of the puzzle, and you know, maybe one or two residents or some other people, someone from the school, you know, just put together your own consortium that you think are gonna be, they also don't make it too big, you know, this is not meant to be, it's a working group. And Peter said, you get that pulled together, and if you, our guys are interested, he is very willing to come and sort of give us a free education program to this small group, trying to have us understand what we're really trying to do, and trying to figure out if there's a way forward to do it, and then if there is, then we'll take the next step. So in a nutshell, that's my understanding, and I'm sorry that I'm not immersed in expertise on this, so I can answer any questions with any meaningful depth, but I can tell you that there was, there was concern in a kindly but adamant way from DEP is, you haven't paid attention to this, and you should. So, that's where we stand.
So, next step is us agreeing that forming a water study committee is a good idea?
Yep. If that's the case, that's, that would be how you start. Everyone says you have to start with, you know, sort of a mandate from the town selectman to say, we want to learn more. You set up this water study committee, you figure out how, who's gonna lead it for you. I recommend Peter Newton, because we know him, and he's, he was very clear on the phone, he was so easy to understand, and he's got all these connections. I'd recommend that, and he will take us through the first learning stages, and then we'll see where it leads, and we'll be back again with the recommendation, and it'll be going back and forth and see what we find. Maybe, maybe we'll come through their learning process in three months and say, hey, we're fine, we didn't work great, it's everything we needed to do and having meet a few twiddles here and there, but we don't know that yet, and it may not be the case.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I feel a little, I'm not sure what the charter is.
Well, the charter is to really study the town's possible water, water resources and the possible growth of the town.
Do the other towns that touch us have this?
Hanson has been going through agonies on this and is working hard on it. Rehoboth had it and...
What about Halifax, Cava, Middleborough?
I didn't check, Halifax, I don't know about each one of them individually. The difference, as you know, is that a lot of the towns that have water, public water, you know, town-supplied water, there's a different part, we're in, the law bifurcates, as I understand it, pretty early on. It is together at the sense when you start identifying community well capacity, which we are just trying to do. But then when the town starts to decide what to do to protect that, by law, the town has to take action if they know they have potential community wells. But then they don't have to make a public water supply, they may sit on it for 20 years. When they become a public water supply, then they go into different parts of the law. The towns around here are all in that, they all have public water supplies and they're dealing with that. And those are rules we will not have to deal with now, but we want to have the water to deal with them 10 or 20, 30 years down the road if we have to.
So, one, I'm willing to serve on the committee if we go ahead with trying to form it as the BOs representative and CPC representative, and I'd be glad to work with Linda on that. We probably can try to put together a committee. So, in any event, I'll make a motion that we agree to form a water study committee.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Well, thank you. Then I will go back and get to Peter and say, well, first I'll talk to you and about, you know, he'll want to know who's on the committee, so I'll pick all your heads about, and there are some, there are some logical actors that I named before that, they're gonna be in, you know. And then after that, if, you know, we feel of others, one or two others that need to be in, and we'll do it.
I'll only add the small addendum that I, one of the reasons I'd be enthusiastic about doing this is that we have Peter Newton, and he was so clear when we had issues or questions about Two Brooks. Good guy, who's gonna, who knows, who knows this inside and out.
I have to say, after about four weeks, because this landed on me and I didn't expect, you know, I thought it was gonna be a 15-minute checkoff, you know, and so I've been calling around, and a lot of the DEP are very, very important, they're so nice, but they start talking to me up here at this level. Well, you know, when you have your, but I'm going, you know, like, when I got to Peter, he started right at the basics, and he was very clear about what towns have to do and what questions the committee will have to understand. And so I thought, this is great, you know, he can explain it really, really clearly and, you know, move everyone along together.
Yeah, we don't know where this is gonna lead, we're just exploring, yeah.
Yeah, we're just exploring, which is where you're supposed to start.
Absolutely. Great, well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, Mark, very much for offering to serve and represent us on this.
Love water.
And maps.
Yeah, and maps. Your two favorite things.
Bree went to you, Tara, come join us.
Could we do the planning board?
Sure.
We could kind of include it under correspondence or my updates, but I believe they want to fill a vacancy, and they have a recommendation.
Great.
I got a phone call from John Schmidt, he's here tonight, but he would like to join our board and has excellent qualifications.
Great.
He's an engineer, principal.
So this is John Schmidt from Cranberry Knoll?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, I think you told us about this gentleman at our last meeting. Excellent.
We've been trying to get coordinate selectmen's meetings and planning board meetings and whatever, so that we get everything together.
Does that give you a full board now?
Yes.
That's great.
Wow, that's terrific.
For the moment.
So I would make a motion that we appoint John Schmidt?
Schmidt.
Schmidt to the planning committee.
How long is his term?
Until the election.
Okay, so it'll be until...
May 18.
May 18?
He put papers already.
Okay.
Okay, so it's all set, going forward. Great, thanks.
All right, until May 18, 2019.
I'll second if we have a...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this for us, this copy, or is this your?
If you'd like, you may certainly have that.
If that could be for Bree, because she'll...
Bree, can you share that with us along the way?
Yes, and if you can stop by office at some point to sign the appointments.
Absolutely. Perfect. Thank you.
Great.
Congratulations.
It's exciting.
That's great.
So were you gonna talk to us about...
Two things, I don't know.
Come on over here so we can hear you.
I don't know if you've got the revision to the slate of officers, too, about the library. Do you have that present? Thank you. They're supposed to sign the sheet of the slate of officers with the revision to the ballot?
I'm gonna have to take this one.
They have, it's a big sheet and they have to vote and sign on it. Okay, so I'll just explain it, but I need them to vote and sign on it. So there were two revisions, there are going to be two revisions to the ballot. You had already reviewed in February the slate of officers that we had, but we found a mistake on the library trustees, the board of library trustees. I had initially had that there would be two board of library trustees for two years. She's gonna bring you the papers.
Okay.
So that's appointed, so she's gonna bring you the elected. So there is two board of library trustees for two years, one board of library trustee for three years. So, in the meantime, Deb reviewed it and we found a mistake on what I had initially given her, so it's actually one board of trustees for two years and two boards of trustees for three years.
Oh, wow.
So still same amount of people, but the wrong terms.
Three, different terms, okay.
So she was able to catch that luckily before we had the signature.
Before you go into print?
Yes. And then I added the town clerk position for two years. So that's what that explains, what I just said to you.
Okay.
And then if you can sign on the back page, you have to vote, yes, vote that you agree that this should be the slate of officers on the ballot.
Okay, I make a motion that the slate of officers as outlined in the March 7 letter from Tara Shaw, town clerk, be approved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if you can sign the last page.
So all three of us need to sign it, or just John? Okay.
I put off the...
Yeah, why not? Now, these ones that we've got here, Tara, these, this is everybody that's on a committee?
Everybody, committee, board, appointed, elected, everybody. So that's everybody, so that you can use that to help with recruiting, you'll see whose terms end and when they expire. It's got everybody, so that you can actually visualize the whole board.
Great.
It does have townhouse personnel as well. So that's just the start, it has everybody, just so it's easier, but like last year, Bridget will be sending to all the boards and committees their individual pages that say when their terms are expiring, so that there's enough time for them to review it at their meetings and recommend the nomination for somebody or recruit somebody, so that she'll have the nomination papers and they'll go to the town clerk's office once you vote on them.
And in the, in the past, we've run up, right up against the deadline.
Yeah, so we're trying not to do that this year.
Exactly.
So before I, before the end of next week, I'd like to have it all done and reviewed.
Great, beautiful.
So then, the nomination papers will go to the town clerk's office, just like the normal procedure. And then cards will be done and they'll come to get sworn in.
Terrific.
So we'll have the correct dates for like, mostly, most of them will be July 1.
Did you count up how many people turn?
No.
I gotta do that. This is great.
So that's a start for you, and we'll have it all reviewed. That's everything that I think has come into my office for boards and committees and departments. For boards and committees and departments and employees.
This is a huge amount of work and it's great.
Huge amount of work.
Well, it's the one that we've been working on wanting to go forward. And I'd like to have Mike, I have it on a shared drive, the shared drive on the network.
Yeah.
So I'd like to have Mike install Access Runtime, which is not the full installation of Access. This is run through Access. So for example, Bridgette and Liz wouldn't be able to modify any of the reports or any of the forms or queries, but they can use the report or the database. And there are probably at least 20 reports on there that I've been, like, for example, this is, this one here is term ending years elected. And this shows four years out and how many positions would be up per year based on the expiration dates. So there's several reports like that.
Great.
So Bridgette, Tricia, Liz will be able to run the reports.
Terrific.
Great.
It's great. I like it.
This is a lot of work, but boy, it is so needed.
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's great. It's already great.
Now that it's set up, it should go.
Yeah, it's, it's great. Yep. And the person who designed this designs them for, I don't know, I don't know how many town clerks she does these for. She's done them for hundreds in the state. And she's a phone call away. She is so responsive for questions. She'll set up a time. She logs right into our system and modifies any reports if we're able to give them, give her the specifics to it. She's, she's great. We're really lucky and appreciative that the town appropriated money and that we got the grants for this because now it makes it shared among the boards. It's not like wasting time. So it'll be great.
Great.
Okay.
Before you go, let's see, do we?
Do you want to acknowledge her resignation letter?
Tara, we want to just acknowledge your resignation letter, which...
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry to see it, obviously. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
You really professionalized that department. So, and I'm sure we'll have something at town meeting.
Okay.
Okay. You will be there.
Well, I live here, I said, so I'm not going to knock you guys out.
Listen to Tara in the show for a moment.
All right. Thank you.
But thank you very much for all the...
Well, and that's why there's a position added to the ballot. I'm glad that it turned out that way, that there was enough time for...
To get it on the ballot.
Yeah. So, so I'll be starting April 1st in my...
Oh, you will be missed. I don't want to, I don't want to cry.
No, don't cry. No, no, it's okay.
No crying, no crying. Yeah, it's a great opportunity for you, Tara. I'm so happy for you.
Unexpected for me even. I blew my family away. Told my 16-year-old he's going to have to make his own sandwiches now that he's getting his license. So, yeah, it'll be great. It's great for our family. A lot of unexpected things happened within the last couple of years in my life. So it's going to be a new chapter.
A new chapter, exactly.
Yeah, it's exciting. My husband's happy to commute with me.
Can your son go to Suffolk?
He can. Yep. And so can I. That was how it started. I was looking at finishing my degree and taking classes. And I ended up on their website and interviewed for a different position, actually, that I didn't receive. And I didn't expect to anyways. I was amazed that they, that they accepted my resume. But I was one of five, but it, it was for a financial background person. It was really for the CFO of Suffolk. And I was completely honest about it and said, I have some background and I'd love to learn from you. And of course, nobody has time for that. So I didn't get the position, but they didn't file my resume. They called me back and explored changing the position specifically for me. So it all worked out. It just all worked out unexpectedly.
Happy to be. Yeah, absolutely.
So I will be able to still take classes, but I'll be directing the undergraduates too. So it'll be that I'll be the assistant to the dean of the Sawyer Business School and the dean of the undergraduate program.
Excellent.
It's exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll make a big impact there as well.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thanks for ruining our day, week, and month.
Sorry. Hey. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
Okay, where are we?
Annual town meeting.
Could you tell me, I apologize, who seconded the, is that Mark for the revised report? The slate of decisions, is that Mark?
Uh...
John made the motion.
Yeah, I think Mark did.
Yeah. Okay, annual and special town meeting prep.
So we're moving along with the budget process and the finance committee would like to come to our meeting on March 25th to go over some budget numbers on a preliminary basis and also to see what we have in for warrant articles.
Good.
Well, it's going to be a busy meeting.
Yeah, it is.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to choose a time for them to come over?
We should. I believe they're starting their meeting at 5:30 just to kind of, you know, collect themselves and everything. So maybe, I don't know, 6:30?
Yeah.
Sounds about right.
We have an executive session that may run a little long.
If we did one executive session at 5:30 and then the next one started at quarter of 6:00 and maybe start the public portion of, the open portion of the meeting at 6:30 that night?
Yeah, maybe it'll be...
And start with VinCom?
Yeah, that sounds good.
We also have...
Or we can make them 6:30, just leave open when we start in case we get done more quickly. We can start in on correspondence or all that stuff.
Also, too, along those same lines, we received the final audit from Lynch and Marini, and they're willing to come to our meeting either on the 25th and give a little overview or they're happy to come on April 8th. So whatever you prefer.
Yeah, it sounds like the 25th is kind of filled up.
All right, I'll talk to them about that. And I also sent them something asking if they could send a draft of a contract extension for a one-year time period over to us.
Do you want to invite Lynch and Marini on the 8th, Liz?
Yes. Before we get into the reuse of the town, Tricia, did you want to say anything?
No, I was just here if anyone had any questions.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it. Reuse of the former police station. I saw that you got some replies.
Yes, so these are four copies for the four of you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. I would only add, I guess I didn't, I didn't send in, but we had had some discussion about possibly fire personnel being in that space, so...
Yes. I know that, I think Tom Millius would really like to move up there.
He would.
Because of the conditions downstairs. We're going to have to fix the conditions downstairs anyways. You can't have water leaking into the building. And I don't know how big that's going to be, what it entails, but...
I mean, in looking this over, it seemed to me that the people downstairs were interested in it. COA was interested in it. I guess my initial concern besides kind of how we're going to go forward in making the decision is we're going to need some money to renovate when we get there.
Right, we are.
And if we don't put something on this year's town meeting, we're a year away from doing it. That feels a little uncomfortable.
I agree. I agree. I'm not sure what we need for money, so...
Yeah.
Maybe I could talk with Tom Millius, have him put on his building inspector hat, and we could walk around up there and just get some, a rough idea of what it might cost so that we can draft a warrant article.
Right. Or at least put a plan on placeholder while we work it through.
Absolutely.
It would be interesting to get, from my perspective, get rid of some of the walls that are non-bearing so we could open it up with the idea that if we just do that and cosmetically make it look a little better, then we'd have another year to figure out, okay, where should people be in? Do we need a conference room up there? We probably do.
Always could use a conference room. Seems like there's opening the breadth of the view on this. It may go in with long-term master planning as well. And yeah, I could make a case for just opening it up, at least temporary use, giving us a year to really come to some big collusion, big conclusions. That feels good to me.
Shouldn't be too much money to do that, I wouldn't think.
Yeah.
There are problems that potentially downstairs that Tom has pointed out, you know, there may be asbestos in the pipes that are now covered by a fake ceiling. So we also need some time to take a look at down there and make sure that we, what we want to do down there.
It could even be an issue upstairs too, from the ceiling.
Okay, if you could do that, Liz, that'd be great.
Sure, I'll go around with him and we can kind of reconvene on this. But at least document some opinions and get the conversation going.
Glad to see people are interested that they, you know, I think the assessors too would make a pretty good reason for doing some work.
So you have that, the placeholders on your radar string? Because actually, by next meeting, we're closing.
We're closing it, you have to close it the last Monday in March.
Wow.
But for the non-monetary-based articles, as long as we have a placeholder, that's not a problem. So I've already been in touch with some that we know that they're coming from St. Eleanor Lock, for example, people like that. So they will be all set as far as placeholders.
Speaking of, if I can just jump to another subject for a minute, the library, you know, we've been repairing that door, the main door that you first enter. If you look up, there's all sorts of holes and, because we've never been able to get it right. Every once in a while, the wind takes it and busts it open. And it's not handicap accessible. So I've talked to the librarian and asked her to at least come forward with a warrant article to make it handicapped accessible.
Okay.
Because that's something, I'm surprised they haven't demanded that. So I'm just putting that on the radar because I think the building maintenance fund is, it should be on a warrant article anyway so that townspeople have a chance to vote on it.
Right, yep.
Okay, board goals, do we want to?
Who's doing the town report?
The selectmen?
Oh, I was work, I was going to work on a draft and then send it out and then you can add to it.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
That's awfully good of you to do that.
It is.
John doesn't look disappointed.
Not at all.
I was figuring how I was going to ask you. And I knew that wasn't going to go.
Like a lead balloon.
So the long-range master plan for the town campus, I think we're just in abeyance until we get through town meeting. I mean, we really got enough on our plate now that we... Grant acquisition, Liz has been having conversations with the lady we had in here.
Oh, yes. I still think that the potential exists for a successful arrangement with her. I think we just need to get through the weeds on some of the stuff concerning consultant versus salary and make sure that the expectations are clear on both ends. So more to come on that. We're awaiting her response.
And that really becomes effective next fiscal year, we go forward. We had a meeting, Liz and I went over and talked to Tom Calter from Kingston. One of the things that came out of that was he talked, you know, where can we share? He would like a follow-up meeting. And one of the things I suggested is maybe we talk about grants and grant writing. So we'll see where that goes.
Sure.
Cool.
See if we can use their animal shelter, too.
Yeah, okay.
If we have a place to put dogs.
I think they're working on an agreement right now.
Okay.
I think?
Chief Dillon is working with Griffin and the police chief, I believe it was from Kingston.
Great.
Great.
On some sort of written arrangement, so...
Nice.
Good. I tried that about a year and a half or two years ago and didn't get very far, but absolutely logical place to have it happen and they have space.
Continued professionalism of Town General in Financial Operations. This is something that's been on my radar and we're just not moving forward. I think what we're going to have to do is task the accountant to go out and look at other towns, what they're doing. In our meeting with Tom Calter, we, we talked about Muni, but they get $55,000 a per year. That's just not going to fly. We need a lower expensive, plus we don't have the operation that Kingston has.
Right.
But I do think that's the way we're going to have to go forward to make this move off the button. So I throw it out there. We can talk about it. Volunteer outreach, this is going to be a great tool. I think we should be putting this on our Facebook page to the extent that we know there's openings. I mean, if people are...
Put openings on there.
Yeah.
Get word out.
Saying this is, yeah, this is, we've got these openings and we'll put some verbiage around it. We'll be glad to mentor you, you know.
There's a CASA meeting tomorrow from 7:00 to 8:00.
Where is that?
That's at the Denit.
At the Denit.
Yeah, that's the, that's our PTO is CASA. So I don't think, I'm going to be able to make it tomorrow, but I don't know if you want to get up there and just kind of get the ball rolling to see if there's any interest in...
I'll try.
Get on the next month agenda and then maybe I could do the next month.
Okay.
And go in and actually...
Who would I call to?
You know, it's on the Denit webpage. It says who the president is of CASA. Yeah, I would see if you can maybe get five minutes on your agenda.
Great. Thanks.
Awesome.
Okay, affordable housing.
Oh, I went to a seminar, a financial seminar at the Wine Bar in Plymouth, which was a really nice venue, and met up with a couple of women from Habitat for Humanity who are very interested in working with Plymouth. And I guess they've been trying to get, to partner with us for about 10 years, but former boards have always thrown up roadblocks.
And that's something that's on your...
Yeah, so I told her that's something that, you know, we're interested in doing as a board. That's one of our goals. So, yeah, interesting. So I think maybe as, after there's some disposition of some town-owned property and we find something that might be acceptable, we could bring them in and talk to them and see what they've got to offer.
And just a reminder, we have $100,000 in CPA money squirreled away for housing at some point. So there actually is money there, which can be planning and...
Right.
Yeah, all that.
Great. Support Town Administrator's Goals. I have that on my plate to finalize the draft. I just, I'll get it for next time.
No problem.
Please come to the next meeting, Liz. Continue protecting towns' natural resources in unique character. Well, this water study is exactly what we're talking about.
It is.
And we have the auditors coming in...
April 8.
April 8, so that's great to talk about governance and just make sure that we're covering all the bases. That'd be good.
Mm-hmm, do what we're supposed to be doing.
And the Department of Revenue did last time recommend that we go out for bids on auditing. So it's kind of late. So that's why Liz is, we're just trying to get a one-year agreement to give us enough time to do that. Administrator updates.
So we're working on our Green Communities Grant Application for next year. And we should be receiving the full reimbursement to close out the current year of funding. We had our final inspection and everything seemed good on that end. So we should get the final reimbursement. And in the meantime, Old Colony Planning Council has been working very hard to help me kind of put together all of the backup information for the next year's grant cycle. Also related to grants, I was told about a vulnerability plan grant opportunity. It's a state initiative that's somewhat similar to hazard mitigation planning, which is a FEMA program. But this would be a state program and... FEMA program, but this would be a state program, and if we apply for the funds, it sounds to me, based on my limited knowledge sort of of what the program entails, the first batch of funding that you get would enable you to put a plan together to identify some of the different hazards or vulnerabilities in the community. And then, once you file that plan, then you're actually eligible to apply for grant funding, to physically do some of the work, to mitigate some of the hazards. So it's kind of a two, call it three-part step program. So I'm, I plan to pursue that and see what's entailed on our end.
What kind of hazards are we talking about?
You could identify, say for instance here, just a few things that come to mind would be the Winnetoxet Dam, the Winnetoxet Bridge. I would say also the fact that we don't have a public water supply, that everybody's on private wells, things of that nature. You know, you could even get into potential damage from trees coming down and storms. It can kind of run the gamut as far as-
Great.
-potential hazards and everything. But what I like about this particular program, a little bit different than the, so the FEMA program, which I think we should also try to apply for and do, the FEMA one, from my understanding of it, makes you eligible for future grant opportunities.
Right.
The state version of the program, from my understanding, actually enables you to apply for funding to help mitigate some of the hazards in your town. So I think we should probably pursue both and see what we're eligible for and go from there. There's no cost to us whatsoever to apply and kinda put a toe in the water and see what's, you know, what's happening with the program. So I think it's worthwhile to pursue.
Absolutely. They talked about it at my Old Colony Planning Council meeting, so that's it right there.
And then also relative to grants, Scott Ripley identified a severe deficiency with the Little Bridge on Route 58, kind of near the Winnetoxet.
Near the Winnetoxet, yeah.
And there's actually a two-by-two hole, if you wanna call it that. It's not in the travel lane, so it's not a major safety threat or anything, but it does need to be repaired. And so in the meantime, in talking with the engineers that he had been dealing with on some other projects, they are actually going to assist him in applying for a small bridge grant.
Beautiful.
The Winnetoxet Road Bridge, I don't believe was eligible, I think it was a few feet too long.
Right.
But this bridge would be eligible, and I believe the deadline is coming up quick, like April 1st or something like that. So they are working on that actively and plan to apply for funding.
I just saw Halifax got $500,000.
Yeah, there's a lot of money.
There is. So he's working on that, and Elise Lyons has been working very diligently with the Fire Department on several grant applications. So she's been working hard, and they have a lot, a lot of things kind of in the mix. Let's see, we covered the library doors. I just put out an RFP for ambulance billing and collection services for the Fire Department, and proposals are due for that on April 3rd.
Say that again, ambulance what?
For the ambulance billing.
Oh, okay, so a software package, in effect, or a company?
More like accounting package. It's to do all of our ambulance billing.
So we would replace the people we have now?
Not necessarily. I mean, they'd be able to, to bid on it, to put in a proposal, but we don't have a current contract with that.
That's ComStar?
Yes, the contract's expired, I believe. So we put that out.
What does that do, I'm sorry, Liz?
It's ambulance billing.
They process the bills.
They process the bills, and then they tell us what's overdue.
Yes, they manage all the ambulance billing and collection.
But you said, I'll repeat the deadline for that?
Oh, I'm sorry, April 3rd. April 3rd. And I've been working with the Wage and Personnel Board on rewording some different items, kind of trying to update the bylaw a little bit with the time that we have left before town meeting. And in doing so, trying to work with somebody from Bridgewater State to see about getting them an intern, just to help them out. They're looking to do some pretty major work over the next year, plus, I would say, as far as updating job descriptions, and they wanna do some salary study-type items. And I just think it's a very large undertaking for a-
Volunteer Board.
Part-time volunteer board.
Yeah.
So I talked with them first, and they are interested, so.
Great.
Good.
I know, I believe Halifax had good luck with an intern from Bridgewater State for their Wage and Personnel Board.
They did, yeah.
They did a lot of work for them.
Very high on that person.
And also, I've been working with CBA a little bit. I did authorize a few hours of council time for them, just to get some guidance on an agricultural versus amusement decision.
Yes.
It's nothing major that I think will require endless council hours, but I think a, a couple conversations would do them some good to give them a little direction. Do you want me to go to correspondence?
Sure.
Okay. We have a letter here from Harry Weichel. This letter is to inform you of my wish not to be considered for reselection to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So he does not wish to continue beyond his term, which I believe is up June of this year.
Is he a full member or an alternate?
Well, he took over as a full.
He's a full member, he actually took over my, my place when I became selection.
We have a letter here from Chief Patrick Dillon. He's requesting the appointment of two special police officers to help him round out his staffing for Michael O'Donnell and Matthew Torenzi, and both of them, he's requesting that they please be appointed tonight through June 30th. So I do have appointment slips here. And they're for special officers.
So I make a motion that Michael O'Donnell be appointed special police officer till June 30th of 19?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I make a motion that Matthew Torenzi be made a special police officer until June 30th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we have just a notification from Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project. They're working on their preliminary budget, and as part of the required notification process, they have sent us an informational packet, which I have here, and Bridget will have in the office if anybody needs to look at it. And then finally, from the Plimpton-Halifax Express, there was a very nice article about Tara's new position.
Very nice.
And also some interesting artwork at Silver Lake. They have a wall mural made of tape.
The tape?
So some fun things going on in the community, but obviously Tara will be greatly missed.
Yeah, nice picture, too, of her.
Is it?
That's a wrap.
Okay. So what do we have? We have minutes?
Uh huh.
12:17, here we, we haven't seen them.
No, we've gotta vote those. I think Bree sent those out again.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You want a copy?
Did I put the class next to each license where I just had licenses?
Right, to clarify what the license was.
Did you all get a chance to read these? Did you see any?
I did.
See any corrections, or?
I was good, so it's anything Christine asked.
Okay, all right, no, I, I think that you already incorporated all my changes.
You wanted me to put the class-
Right.
Next to each license.
Right. And, and your changes were John called the meeting to order.
John?
John's now the chair? Perfect, perfect.
You're the chair.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 12:17 as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Never wanna see those again. So the next one?
Okay, 25th.
25th. I'm not doing well yet.
Well, actually, did we had, we had executive session, we held most till last?
There is an executive session-
Okay, for the same date?
For February 25th.
Okay, perfect. All right, so on the regular session, I just had a couple of minor things. And at 6 o'clock, Sluckman Chair, John Traynor called the open session to order, and you've got everybody's initials except John, so I would just add a JT after him. And then after voting on the Air Vacuum Corporation, that should be 3-0 because John was still here at that point. And then I thought the purpose of us meeting with the planning board was to accept the article and to recommend that they continue the process to bring it to town meeting?
And I, the wording which we got from the attorney was very specific, and to acknowledge receipt of proposed zoning bylaw amendment.
Okay, so let's insert that language.
So I'll pass that down to Liz, or to Bree.
Okay.
The very bottom thing there.
Why don't you just attach it to that?
Here, you can have the whole thing.
Perfect, okay.
All right.
All right, and then on the, the Snow and Ice Highway Department, the correspondence, I made a motion to declare a snow and ice emergency, which allows them to deficit spend. So it's a declaration.
So.
So that's the only-
I should say declaration.
To declare, yeah, to declare a snow and ice emergency. And that's all I had.
Okay, good. So we'll make, make a motion that, did you have something?
No, no, no.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we wanted the executive session from-
I'll make a motion that we accept the executive session minutes from February 25th as written.
Great, second.
Declare a snow and emergency.
Okay.
All right, and we have a motion and a second for the executive session from 2:25. To accept, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, so we're current.
So we're up to date.
Yay.
Yay.
It's a good place to be.
CJ made motion?
Yes, made motion.
She seconded?
Actually, Mark made the motion on the executive, and I seconded it, I think.
And it's on film.
It's on film.
And on the one as amended for 2:25, John made the motion.
I know, I know, we need to be consistent. Can you give that to Liz? Thank you.
Sorry.
What was this one as amended, the 2:25?
The 2:25.
John made the motion.
Uh, I seconded.
Okay.
Okay, any other business that we should be chatting about?
Rants and raves?
Yeah, rants and raves.
Do I have that, Liz?
Gosh, I don't really have anything. I, I think my, my rant, or my rave is gonna be Tara. What an amazing job she did here. She will be sorely missed. She has done a great job bringing, you know, evolving with all of the changes in, in that position. So much has changed in such a short period of time, with all the change in the public records laws and everything else, and it's really a, a demanding position, and she has rolled with it and, you know, risen to the challenge and done an amazing job, so she will be sorely missed.
I think one of the outcomes of that is, there's a couple of things that she does as kind of an aside, we're gonna have to figure out who takes it over. So the codification, that was, came through the town clerk's office, but the other, there are other things that are done, the website maintenance?
Right.
I don't think it's fair to look there. So we, well, we'll figure that out after. So, go ahead, Mark.
So I actually normally would just have raves, I have a slight rant along the way. Last meeting, we were asked to declare a snow and ice emergency, which we did, and I think kind of innocently, one or more of us said, whoa, how can we have one of those when we had so little snow? And so my, my rant is sort of how communication can kind of be misunderstood, that, that in no way was that intended as a criticism, but it was heard by some as a criticism. And I still don't fully understand what we do with slow, snow and ice deficiencies, but that every year we run a huge deficiency and it gets taken up along the way. And then in fact, for 2019, we have spent so far year-to-date much, much, much less than in previous years. So if there was any implication that things weren't behandling, weren't behand, weren't being handling right, that wasn't the intended implication. So that's the rant, and just how do you communicate in a way that it isn't misunderstood? And so related to that, I think is the rave, is I hear nothing but good things in what our highway department has done with snow and ice this year. So, so, thank you.
So my rave, I went to a meeting of the bylaw committee. Hadn't been there for a while. Unfortunately, I, I'm meeting conflicts with other committees that I'd like to go sit in and just, you know, catch up. But my rave is just for the sheer amount of work they're doing, getting ready for town meeting, the articles. We're gonna have to spend some legal money having these all reviewed.
Review.
It's, it's just so much needed to get us up to date. We have lots of things going on with people trying to go around our bylaws, so this is really important work. So kudos to the people who are working on that committee.
It's a lot of work.
It is, I agree. Okay, being no further business, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Good night.
Thank you.